Thank you for joining us tonight to meet the Teton County Commissioners Candidates. Len Carmen, Talia Macker, Jim Rooks, Melchior Moore, Vicki O'Donoghue.
Vicki O'Donoghue.
I'm right here, good, thanks. I'm Elizabeth Prince, a recent graduate of Jackson Hole High School. I'm very interested in our political process and being the moderator for tonight's forum is an excellent opportunity for me to learn. So I ask for your patience and understanding as this is my first time participating in an event like this. Tonight's forum is sponsored by Wyoming League of Women Voters, Teton County Library, Jackson Hole News &amp; Guide, Jackson Hole Community Radio, KHOL, 89.1, and Buckrell. With funding provided by Teton County Library Foundation in France and the Community Foundation of Jackson Hole. And Patty Rocha is providing live Spanish translation. Tonight's forum focuses on those candidates who are being challenged in the August 20th primary election. Candidates who are unopposed at this stage are not participating in tonight's Q&amp;A forum. They'll be invited to participate in a Q&amp;A forum dedicated to the November 4th general election. Thus, the uncontested candidates, Mr. Moore and Ms. O'Donoghue, will each have two minutes tonight to introduce themselves. However, they will not participate in tonight's primary election forum. The contested candidates, Ms. Macker, Mr. Rooks, and Mr. Carmen, you will each have one and a half minutes to introduce yourselves. In that time, please also answer the question, "What book are you currently reading?" Then we will proceed onto the Q&amp;A format for these candidates. In the Q&amp;A session, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer questions posed by one of the media panelists. Jasmine Hall represents the Jackson Hole News &amp; Guide, and Dante Chiluppa, an attendee of KHOL 89.1 Community Radio. Karen Jager, a League of Women Voters member, is our timekeeper. She will indicate when time is running out. We anticipate having time for eight questions. Audience members can also write their questions on note cards, which will be collected by Sandy Shubchine and Dee Buckstaff, League of Women Voters members. These cards will be delivered to the media panelists for review and possible use. In addition, each candidate will be given a red card, which can be used twice during tonight's forum. Each red card offers one extra minute to expand on your answer, review another candidate, or bring up something he feels important. You may use these at any point during the Q&amp;A session by signaling that intent to meet the moderator. Following the Q&amp;A session, candidates will each have one minute for final closing remarks. We hope to end the forum around 7:30, allowing for a short time for meaningful conversation with audience members. The evening will end by 8:00. So let's start with the two uncontested primary election candidates running for county commissioner. Both unopposed in their political party. Mr. Moore and Ms. O'Donoghue will each have two minutes for introductions. Please also answer the question, "What book are you currently reading?"
Nikki, come up to the front.
And Rook?
Oh, yeah, that's her.
Where's Vicki?
Who wants to come over? I guess now, just jump up.
Ladies first?
Rock scissors, paper scissors?
I'll go first. Yeah. Hi guys, I'm Melchior. Some of you guys, most of you guys know me as Dylan. I honestly don't care. But, um, the, uh, stop there for a minute? But six generations, 46 years old, I think we're looking at Topping Lake, Mussett Ranch, Mormon Road, May Park, and then now I'm in South Park South. Some people don't care. I was told that people don't care that we're from here. So I guess, you know, do you care about conservation? Do you care about water? And then, um, what book am I reading? I am no, it's no secret that I'm the only Republican, so I am reading Breaking History by, well, now I'm drawing a blank, by the son-in-law, Jared Kushner. Jared Kushner. Great book. Really breaks it down, talks about a lot of the stuff that he accomplished during his presidency that wasn't in the media. And then there are the tweets. So my platform is community, heritage, trying to figure out how to provide for your children for the future without putting a zip line from the airport to the Teton Village, you know, or destroying Kelly and Hawgaird. Although, you know, unless you want. What else? I started trying to have these canned political speeches, but I'm talking to 12,700 of you and the target keeps moving. I'm trying to be, you know, in the middle somewhere so I can not be yelled at on a porch. But, you know, Republican values, think of me as a Mormon Catholic that doesn't have an invitation into the temple. And that's, that's how I would describe that. I don't think I need the whole two minutes rambling a little bit, but yeah. Oh, my phone number is on the internet. You can call me and talk to me about anything you want. And who's Vicki? Here's Vicki.
I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for allowing me to share my beliefs for a stronger Teton County. My name is Vicki O'Donoghue, better known as Ms. Vicki. I've been in this ballot for 27 years, and all the kids call me Ms. Vicki. And I have been here for 27 years teaching. I am running for the elected office of Teton County. I have traveled these roads. I know the infrastructure of Teton County very well. I am a researcher. I research and I find facts. And I think that's very important to do when you're a county commissioner or elected officer. Because if you do not research, you don't have the facts. You do not know what builder's coming in, what politician's coming in. You must research to find out facts. People do not like facts sometimes because you find the truth. But that's who I am. Also, I am very concerned because I live in the county. I live in the county. I've lived here for over 30 years. My son has moved to Cincinnati because he cannot get a house. So he moved. There are a lot of young people who cannot get a house here, and you all know this. It's all rent, affordable. So my concern is this. We need to take care of our residencies who live here now. We are being forced out because of CCNRs, ISD. And a lot of people don't know what an ISD is. And I will educate you. If you want to know what it is, you call me. Because I have done research, I've got the laws on it, I have had to, I've had to go battle with the ISD. And if you don't know, look on your property tax. It's at the very end. Okay? The other thing is safety on the roads. The infrastructure on the roads. I drive the roads every day. I offered my service to tell them, "Hey, I can help you with the roads." I called twice. No. You know what they do? They subcontract out. I would have done it for free. For free. I know the roads. I've been driving these roads for 27 minutes. Okay? 27 minutes. I'm looking at that, she says stop. By the way, one last thing. I want to keep Teton County the Old West values. The Old West. That's why we are here. Thank you very much. I got that bell. I will again, Ms. O'Donoghue, Teton County, that's two minutes. Thank you. That was two minutes? Woo, I quit. Okay, anybody else? Thank you.
Now it's time to meet the contested candidates for the primary elections. Mr. Macker, Ms. Macker, Mr. Rooks, and Mr. Carmen. You each have one and a half minutes to introduce yourselves. In that time, please also answer the question, "What book are you currently reading?" Then we will proceed to the media's Q&amp;A format for these candidates. Mr. Carmen?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Thank you to the Jackson Hole News &amp; Guide, KHOL, Teton County Library. A special shout-out tonight to League of Women Voters and my sisters, Mary Ellen and Susan, who are in the back corner. If you'd please stand up quickly. Susan, you guys started coming to Jackson Hole. She sold t-shirts and mugs on the sidewalk in front of the Cowboy Bar in 1973, and brought our family here in '75, and away we go. Book I'm reading is not very far. All the time in the world, I picked it up at Hungry Jack's General Store. A few weeks ago, I recommend that you visit Hungry Jack's General Store frequently and shop generously to keep that dairy store going. And it's a lovely book about fly fishing, and I love the cover image of a Mackenzie River drift boat on it, which is something that I've gotten in the past and really loved. I have been a, an active citizen in our community for the last 41 years. I started with an outfit called the Jackson Hole Alliance for Responsible Planet. I had a great introduction to our community through that service. I learned to show up, stand up, and speak up. And if you elect me to the Board of County Commissioners, I will bring civility and advocacy and my training as a lawyer to the continued service of our community. I hope this is a good forum, and I thank you for the time to introduce myself.
Vicki, Nate, friends, I'm Natalia Macker, and it has been an honor and a privilege to serve as one of your Teton County Commissioners for the last nine years. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for your commitment to civic engagement. Born with the Women's Suffrage Movement in 1920 because women belong in this room and in all the rooms and at all the tables. I ran for office for the first time because I visited the legislature and wondered where all the women were. And although I didn't win that race, I ended up where I was supposed to be, which is at On Your County Commission and in local government. I love local government because we get to work together, all of us in this room, to solve our problems. There are no magic wands for what we need to do in our community, but I believe that we can't stick our head in the sand and be afraid to take practical action. Our working families need it, our small businesses need it, and our ecosystem needs it as a working bond. I know how to get things done and bring people together. My experience and relationships extend beyond the county. I'm the vice president of the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, where I collaborate with commissioners all across the state to advocate for counties in Cheyenne. I also serve on the Community College Commission and the Wyoming Council for Women at the Department of Workforce Services. Outside of public life, I'm artistic director of Osport Theater, and I have three sons. I recently finished listening to Tom Lake by Ann Paget. Thank you to the library for free audiobooks. That's how a busy person reads. And then last week, given the work we have before us in our country, picked up Adrienne Marie Brown's Emergent Strategy. Thank you.
Thank you, Len and Natalia. My name's Jim Rooks. I'm proud to know most of the people in the audience. I have 118 years of proud family history in Jackson Hole, all across the county. That's five generations, not counting my kids. They tell me I'm a tourist because they're sixth generation now. And the reason I bring that up is because it's a way to thank the League of Women Voters. I haven't missed one of these forums in decades. I think this is one of the most important political events that takes place in our community. And speaking of the history, when I say proud history, my great-grandmother was Genevieve Van Leek, who was elected to the petty pole rule. We always say she's the plump one on the right, if you look at the photo. Grew up with a lot of just incredible people in my family, and I feel like genetically and really spiritually obligated to service community because each and every person in each and every generation did the same. I was a 25-year teacher, principal, was principal of Summit High School, assistant principal of the high school. I was an athletic coach. Some of you might remember the We the People program. It was like law school for high school kids. It was one of my proudest teaching moments. For the last four years, I've been on Jackson Town Council. I think I've been a very effective, engaged leader. I know that's up for debate. I'm currently on the Trot Unlimited Board as a long-term volunteer board member, Wining Stargazers and the Wonder Institute, and I still volunteer in the classrooms, both here in the valley and over in Idaho. And the book I'm reading now was prompted by The Ribbon Cutting at the Museum. They have a quote, right, as you walk in from Marty Murray. So I'm reading, "Wacky Wilderness" by Marty and Olas Murray. It's kind of a joint endeavor because they said there's something about that Jackson Hole, and I agree.
Thank you so much. Let's now start with our first media question from Jasmine of Jackson Hole News &amp; Guide to Ms. Macker.
There we go. Is it ready? Yeah. And I, and I agree.
Don't think you're crazy.
Just flocking up. All right, well, Natalia, we're gonna get back to basics, but we would like to know how you guys define the job of a county commissioner.
What a great question. We, you know, the boring way of describing it, I would say, is that we get to be generalists and that we work in a lot of different areas. Other county elected officials are specific to their office, but we work in a lot of policy areas. But really, the fun part of how I'm describing a county commissioner is connecting our community to the services that they need. We hear about problems, we help resolve them, we need something, we find a way to do it. Sometimes we're just the convener, and we set the table and invite people to the table to bring their ideas. Sometimes we connect our community to the services they need not in our community. Sometimes we connect them to people in the community. But I think we are a place where the community can connect with their government, connect with their public services, and bring their problems, and be heard.
Same question?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I work with the county closely, weekly, bimonthly basis. Certainly, it starts out with the basics, right? Weekly voucher meetings, bimonthly general meetings, sometimes special meetings, the joint meetings between the town and the county. But when you're essentially asking, "What is this job?", right? And in theory, we're seeking to be politicians. I'm guessing all three of us are reluctant in that way with that term, right? And I've thought of myself, an old-timer around here, said, "You're not a politician, you're a statesman." And I thought that was the best compliment I received. I think that's what it's about. It's about fostering trust, listening, engaging with people. And then Mark Barron, he, I was struggling early on to like find myself in this new job, and he says, "It's no different than being a teacher. You're a public servant. You're trying to help people." And as soon as he said that, it all kind of clicked. And so ultimately, I think we're in the service industry, and I think we're here serving the community.
Thank you, Jim, and thank you, Natalia, and thank you for the question. It's been my pleasure and my education to work with county commissioners since 1983, when Leslie Peterson and Peggy Faes and all along were on the county commission. We only had three commissioners in those days, and I've worked with every county commissioner. I think there are 24. I see Shannon Shuck trying to hear Ben Ellis, her husband, spend eight good years. Hank Fibbs, dear friend, lived in eight years. I've had the chance and the privilege to work with county commissioners all of my adult life. Counties are a political subdivision of the state of Wyoming. So we have 23, of course. And Teton County has a five-person board of county commissioners. And the answers you've heard so far are great. Here's just more information. It's a team. You have to have five people who work together and who try and advance the common interest and bring different skills and talents and connections to the community so that the whole board can hear the community and then move forward by taking actions as a group with at least three votes and you hope for five votes. So it's a, it's a team sport, and bringing, you know, team skills and civility and connections to the community is something that I think I'll bring to the county commission. And also, although I have good roots in the valley and wide connections, I'm also not part of the current group of people who are serving on the town council and the county commission. And I think bringing some fresh perspective is something that voters might value. I hope you do.
Thank you so much. Our second media question will come from Dante of KHOL.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
And be started by Mr. Rooks.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. The question is, "What is local government's role in protecting and advancing our democracy in these divisive times?"
That might be the predominant question in our country, right? In our state and in our county and town. I opened yesterday's forum at the Rotary Club, celebrating my colleagues here and all five of us who are running for this. One thing I know about this race is it's gonna have a lot of civility, a lot of mutual respect. And that's very refreshing because that's not always the case, even here on a local level. And it's already very different from when I ran in 2020. I think the events of the past weeks, years, have reemphasized the need for civility and respect in politics as the first and foremost thing that we can do. We are here to represent the people, all the people, young, old, different ethnicities. It doesn't really matter. I'm proud of my personal history, but if you have a good idea, I don't care if you've been here five minutes. It's a Captain Bob quote, right? Doesn't matter if you've been here one minute, you can contribute to this community. And I think local government, you know, the founders argued that the best, most responsive government should be your local government. And that's why I'm proud of myself, and, you know, campaigning's all about "I," governing's all about "we." That's a Schefter quote, by the way. And so it's uncomfortable sometimes, but I think I'm the most responsive local representative. Like if you call me, my cellphone number's in a newspaper ad today. A lot of friends said, "If you just put it in the newspaper." You call me anytime, I'll call you back. And I think that's the essence of local government, is being responsive to the local people.
Thanks for the question. We live in a community with a rich tradition of civic engagement. We have just enormous voter turnout, election after election, and I hope that continues to be the case. In this primary election, you've got three choices on the Democratic primary ballot, and two will go forward. So you've got some choices here, and your vote counts. We have, in Wyoming, open media laws, and our community, our county, has been very respectful of those. We've not had difficulties with welcoming people and making sure that there's open access to government. And so I would very much anticipate continuing that. One of the things that I love about Wyoming and about Teton County is our chance to, through our state legislature, to vote on special purpose excise taxes or optional sales taxes. Voters get to decide, "Is it worth spending my money on this project? Do I want to give the government an extra penny of general revenues? Do we need to build a new courthouse?" That's citizen control right there on the ballot. We get to decide, each of us, where we're going with individual projects. And we have done a beautiful job in investing in our community infrastructure through those means, and I look forward to having our community continue to make smart choices about how we use our money through that direct sort of engagement in democracy through the ballot.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Rooks that this is kind of the question of the age and the question of, is our society, is our country, is our community gonna meet this moment that will likely be looked on in the future as a pivotal moment for democracy in the world? So I've been thinking about this a lot, and I really do believe that if we want our country to be different, we have to start at home, and that that starts in our own community and how we engage with each other. I try to remind myself and my colleagues, if they need a reminder, that we should debate our ideas, but we don't debate people, and that we don't need to personally attack each other, and that there's no room for it, and it doesn't advance any of our ideas, and that we can, there are many good ideas out there, there's no really right way, but if we shut down any good debate by personal attacks, we invite people to disengage from the process because they don't want to be in this room, they don't want to ask our questions, they definitely won't want to run for office. And then we get people holding elected office that are leaning into ideology that's not based in the challenges that we're facing. County commission is a partisan seat because that's what State Title II tells us, but I will say that there have been very few votes I've taken that knowing the letter after my name told me what I was supposed to do. We want thinking people representing us in our democracy, and that depends on all of us as voters showing up and putting those people in office.
Thank you so much. Our next question will be from Jasmine to Mr. Carmen.
Len, you talked a little bit about how the county commissioner is a team. I think that plays really well into our next question we have for you, which is, what role do each of you usually play on a team?
Oh, my. The teams that I've been a part of that I think are most relevant have been nonprofit boards of directors, and now currently I'm on the Hungry Jack's General Store volunteer board of directors, funding that community-owned business. I've been the chairman of the board, I've been secretary, I've been treasurer, I've been vice president, I've been president of the Teton County Bar Association, I'm on the Wyoming Community Foundation Board, I'm its secretary. I think one of the things I look forward to while serving as a county commissioner is using my best skill as a lawyer, which is listen. That's my father's advice to me on the day I graduated from law school. He wasn't a lawyer, but he worked with them, and he said the best ones he ever worked with were really good listeners, and I took that to heart. And I've made a point when I'm with clients or serving on nonprofit boards, to keep my mouth closed if I can, and listen and take it in, and if the meeting's going in a healthy direction, just let it run. That's good. You don't need to hear from me. But if it's going off course, or if it needs a little redirection, or if there's an idea that needs to be elevated and advanced, I have to raise my hand and move it forward. So that's one way of being teammate within the board of county commissioners. And then the other is having the trust of the community and the other commissioners in being a liaison to county departments, state officials, citizen groups, having that sort of lens out there. He's, he's gonna represent all of us well and fairly. So I hope that's a good answer.
Thank you. My youngest son recently turned two, and so I've been learning more about zone defense rather than hand-to-hand as a mom's three, and that's a new, as a non-sports person, that has been a new chore. But in my, my work with the theater, we are all about collaboration, and we assemble and build new teams about every six weeks when we undertake a new production or start a new project. And inevitably, because of my nature, I often end up the year in some way. And as I have grown and invested in my own leadership knowledge and leadership training, one of the things that I have tried to foster in the different teams that I've worked with to build is to find what drives the people on the team, what they're interested in, what they're passionate about, and give them that work, and let them shine and dig in and go for it. And that has been really rewarding, to see people find their passion and then dig in and be able to facilitate that. And then the other thing that has been told to me many times, and many people say, but I think is really true to really in government, is that it's amazing what you can get done if you don't care about having credit. And I think the commission generally does a good job of that. The board takes action, the board does stuff, and we can work together as a team. But for us as a community, I think we should celebrate that, that it is about us doing things together, and that very little, next to nothing, happens by any one person on their own.
Thank you. So yeah, it's interesting how different personalities of people function within teams, and depending on the team, it changes. What I've done, both with the community and then on Town of Jackson, is I truly think I'm the voice of the people. Like I think I bring like the street-level awareness and thoughts about things, and that doesn't just come to me. I'm just out there all the time, and armed orgins is in the room. We see each other like 10 times a week because if there's an event, tribal talk, CWC, Rook and, whatever, I love this community. I go to the community and I listen. So I don't know a lot of people. Some of my best friends are 80, and I've got two teenage kids, hang out with a lot of kids, and so it's just getting a lot of like what the people are saying. I think I'm well-informed. I'm a teacher. Jeff Parrot's in the room, an incredible teacher and coach. I do my homework. Vicki mentioned it, you gotta do tons of research, you gotta read that packet, you gotta read the letters, you gotta read the public comment. I'm really serious about that on the team. I'm a dealmaker. I'm the youngest member of a very boisterous family, and so I learned in a very young age that I wasn't gonna get anything done unless I forged compromise. I'm the boots-on-the-ground guy. I always like, you know, meetings or whatever, I go look at what's actually happening, and it's amazing what you get if you actually go look at the side of the project and whatnot. And lastly, my mom's friends from here, my dad's friends from all over Wyoming, and I'm kind of a Wyoming connection guy. So when people are trying to think about how what we're doing fits in to the greater political spectrum, jurisdiction, I have a lot of experience all across the state of Wyoming.
Thank you so much. Our fourth question will be from Dante to Ms. Macker.
Yeah, Natalia, you have the pleasure of moving to some tougher questions here. So this is a hot button issue throughout the county, but is there room to raise property tax mills in Teton County?
Well, technically, there is room because there are unassessed mills within our property tax availability. So is there the capacity to do so? Sure. Is there the desire? Absolutely not. I think everybody thinks their property tax has gone up even when their mills might have actually gone down because your property tax- have actually gone down, because your property tax is based on market valuation, and those have gone up. So I, yes and no. And I think the other thing that is really a point of discovery for us, and that we wait to see how it's going to play out, is the work that the legislature has done on property tax and changes they have made to our system, and what impacts those will have, and what that means locally for funding government and the funding we have available to us. We have one of, if not the lowest, mill levy rates in the state because of our valuations. Most other counties are maxed out at their 12. And the majority of your property taxes aren't coming to the county anyway, they're going to schools. So the property tax discussion is going to continue to be heated in our state with lots of perspectives and different ideas. And I think I also see it as part of the ongoing evolution of our tax structure generally in Wyoming, which will be largely in the hands of our legislature, but that our community needs to be at the table for, because we have different circumstances at play here than the other counties in our state.
This way? Thank you. I couldn't say it's my least favorite tax, but I do not support raising our local property taxes, specifically not right now. And I voted against the town that has some very serious budget challenge moving forward. My first year on council, you know, so I have a voting record, that's not just what I'm saying, I voted against raising a half-mill property tax in the Town of Jackson. And so I'm also down there in Cheyenne, I mentioned Art again, we kind of live down there, which is very rare for town councillors, right? But we spent months combined over the years, and Art in particular, last year, he was there for a full month, I go down there for two weeks a week, and we lobbied hard for property tax reform. And it seemed like we were never going to get it, and then, and then all of a sudden, what do you know, the coalition came together, and all of a sudden, a lot of people around the state of Wyoming were interested in it. So it proves, you've got to do the long game down there in Cheyenne, because just when you're about ready to give up, things shift and change. And I'm really proud of the five different forms of property tax reform we now have in the state. But I'm also not a very good politician, I'll tell you just what I think. And I also will change my opinion, right? Like, right now, no way. But there's a ballot, a potential ballot initiative that could revolutionize property tax and diminish property tax radically. So I reserve the idea to say, we may need to change our opinions about whether or not property tax is part of our funding equation, based on what happens in the state of Wyoming with some grassroots petitions.
Thank you. Short answer, no. Slightly longer answer, local government needs revenue to operate. We have demands that are currently unmet. I am champion of replacing the 1968 seismically deficient, security unsafe, Teton County courthouse with an adequate new building. That's going to take a chunk of money, maybe $100 million. You can't just fundraise that from the neighborhood, sorry, that's not the way it works. You'll have a chance, thanks to recent action by the town and county, to consider a seven-cent sales tax, that funding which would go with $21 million he'd ear to support building a new courthouse. It is not okay to have your sheriff's department and our dispatchers at the bottom of three stories of rubble if the Teton Fault decides to slip. Just not okay. It's a matter of safety and common decency. I also, in 1990, I was down at the state legislature, lobbied in favor of a real estate transfer tax on high-value properties on a counting option basis. I was told then that we'd never get it through in that session, but come back a couple times, and we'd have a good chance for it. Well, here it is, 2024, we still don't have it, but that revenue stream is available to us, and we need to get that done. And if I were just to wave a wand, I'd say half of it for affordable housing, half of it for conservation measures. So there you go. No to the property taxes, but let's make sure we take care of our basic needs.
Our next question will be given by Jasmine to Mr. Rooks.
Well, Jim, this is one of my favorite questions, just because I'm the state government reporter at the News &amp; Guide. What do you believe the relationship between the state and Teton County should look like, and how will you navigate it?
Excellent question from a really well-qualified person. Jasmine's work at the News &amp; Guide over the last few years, sorry, but I have to compliment you, it's the best state-level reporting I've seen in like decades. So you did a great job of helping marketing and understanding what goes down there. I encourage more and more people to spend time in Cheyenne, the Bob Marley quote, who feels it, knows it. If you're not down there looking at what the current state legislature looks like, then it's almost impossible to understand. And so I've lived in nine different towns in Wyoming during my lifetime. I think I'm uniquely qualified to negotiate the halls down there. It is, you know, Natalie said it eloquently, right, like, where are we? Like, it is a good old boys' club down there. And I've never been more concerned about the future of the state of Wyoming. When I grew up here, and all throughout education, and spending a lot of time in Cheyenne, I worked in two years in Cheyenne, my first two years teaching at an alternative high school there, is there was, you know, you had the good old-fashioned Republicans and the Wyoming Democrats, and generally speaking, people got along. There used to be something called "local control." I don't know if you guys heard about the death of this incredible legal principle, but we are just being, so what I think it should look like, I think we should have the ability, town and county, to do what we need to do to meet the needs of our constituents and our citizens, and I do not think the state should interfere with that. I think, but then again, it has to be respectful, it has to be a long game. So I can dream about what I think it should look like, but what it looks like is really dangerous, and there's a very real chance that the Freedom Caucus will take over the Wyoming House unless people mobilize and vote against that.
Thank you, Natalie, these guys are good at keeping track of the sequence of speakers. My turn next. With respect to our relationship between Jackson Hole, Teton County, and the rest of Wyoming, it's been a challenge forever. You say you're from Teton County, and they just start making jokes about you, right? We've all been there, we've all felt it and done it. I am proud of Teton County, and I take those kicks and those jokes, and I listen, and then I just, I'm real with people. And, you know, I'm on the statewide board of the Wyoming Community Foundation, that's a great way to connect and to see the needs that we have all across our state. I've been on the board of the Wyoming Outdoor Council. I'm a University of Wyoming graduate, so I've got connections and history throughout our state. I think it's really important that we stay in touch with Representatives Byerman, Stor and Ian, as Senators Garu and Box Center, and make sure that we've got open lines of communication with them, so that they can advance our interests in the state legislature. I also am pleased to say that, well, sort of pleased, when there was a proposal to remove local control, local land use planning authority, when it comes to citing private schools, I thought that was really corrosive to our overall land use planning ability in Jackson Hole. So I and a handful of others went to Cheyenne and made our case with state legislators to try and protect local zoning control. We lost. We have to stay connected to the rest of the state. We've got to just stay in touch with friends and continue to be real, so that people don't just make jokes about us or say kind of mean things about us, they treat us as the living, vibrant, real community that we are.
Thank you. I think this question is so important, because counties are an extension of the state government, but our county is in the state of Wyoming. And so what happens in Wyoming is going to happen here and is happening here, and our future is intertwined. And so it would be easy for us to sit back and live in our bubble, but we cannot do it. So what do I think it should look like? I think it's about our relationships. Those are relationships that your elected officials might be able to have, but really they're the relationships that every citizen in our community can build and engage. We need people to show up. There are ways that you can sign up to be part of organizations, state boards, commissions, elsewhere in our state, to tell the story of the people of Teton County. My experiences engaging with commissioners and folks all across the state have told me that we have much more in common than that. And when I break down and end up telling them the story, they tell me their story, we find out it's the same thing, we actually want the same thing from the bill or from the state, we just come at it from a different angle. And you can't discover those connections if you don't talk to people and share who we are and what we do. As an economic force in our state, our county should be at the table. And I hesitate to say that it's about all of us just showing up to tell them what they should or shouldn't do as legislators, but it's really about caring about what's happening in places besides here. We've had our most success working on bills with the legislature, when we can tell our story, Sheridan can tell their story, and Nayarre County can tell their story, slightly different, but we all want the same thing, and I think that's where we find success.
I almost forgot I had this one. I think football. You did a great job, by the way, Ms. Prince. So I wanted to add, because I think it's something we don't talk about enough, about our relationship with the state of Wyoming. And Natalie was correct in saying it ultimately comes down to relationships, which is true in most of life. The governor was in town yesterday, celebrating with Eric Westby with regards to getting the pass reopened, it was a great event at the Elks Club. I walked up to the governor, and everybody said, "How do you know the governor so well?" And so he gave me his governor's name, neither locked me, actually. Because I gave him a belt buckle, I collect old Western belt buckles, and when he came to Jackson like five years ago, I walked up to him, introduced myself, gave him a buckle, and developed that relationship, right? And so I consider him a friend. Our state delegates have been doing an excellent job, one of the greatest sessions last year, a lot of success on behalf of those five. The state boards, the state board of county commissioners, I worked over the last four years with the Wyoming Association of Municipalities. They're not typically going to do anything for Jackson, but if Park County and Congress County and Lincoln County can get together, we can go coalitions, get stuff done. And the deregulation task force, I hope everyone's paying attention to that right now, because that's potentially a lot of harm could be done to our community based on what they decide to do.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Dante to Mr. Carman.
Yeah, Len, you mentioned this SPECT bill, or the, you know, or SPECT for the new Teton County Justice Center, which is attached to the MOU, negotiates a new split between the town and the county to fund joint services. Do you think the county holds any responsibility in addressing the town's budget deficit?
Yes and no. You know, the town has to deal with its own budget, and I think Councilor Jordanson's here, and maybe others are. And it's important for town government to examine their budget and look for places they can cut expenses before they turn to the county, under the assumption, which I don't think is correct, but it seems to be a operating assumption that, well, the county has all this money, let's go to the county and get them to underwrite some shortfalls in the town budget. So I think the scrutiny for the town budget starts with the town, but then we've got lots of joint departments, and I've seen those develop over the years, and we've created those, because they're more efficient than having a separate town this and a separate county that over and over again. If we can combine administrative services and reduce our overhead and share costs, that's a good plan for us to do. So yeah, the town's got to be in charge of its scene, but then we cooperate on lots of stuff, and I think that's the correct way we do it.
Thank you. I do share the belief that my predecessors from many years ago
Why are you closing in 15 minutes?
...when they established our joint departments, which is the genesis of the conversation we're having now, that as a county with only one municipality and concentrated population, we all experience a great amount of effective and efficient service delivery by collaborating. Those departments have evolved over time, the services that we provide have multiplied over time, and it's time for how we work together to evolve. This is happening in this conversation right now, seemingly at the brink of this moment around the SPECT ballot, but as has been said in multiple meetings, is the culmination of several years of work, looking at how we work together and what our funding opportunities are. And the town and county have access to different streams of funding in the form of different and various taxes that we can do on our own, or that we can do with permission from the voters to tax themselves. And so we're going to continue to work on that. I believe that good collaborators are made by having clear understanding of each other's jurisdiction, and so the town is responsible for its budget, and the county is responsible for our budget. The county also collaborates with other county elected officials on the county budget, and meet a lot of different statutory requirements through our budget, so we have different responsibilities. And so we can't just conflate them as being the same, but we will continue, I think, the town and county, to be at the table to figure out the most effective, efficient way of delivering services to our community.
Thank you. Yes, essentially, your question is, do you think the county has the responsibility to help the town with its budget? Absolutely. And I think Natalie and I have board to do with the deal that was struck. I mean, live meetings, behind the scenes, trying to get a compromised deal that's best for both parties. I really appreciated working with her and the rest of the council and the county to get that deal done. It was, that deal's maybe 20 years and it works, right? So it's not a small thing. This is my first disagreement. I respectfully disagree with something that Len said, that the town has to deal with its own budget. Of course we do, but I don't know if you guys know this or not, but the town is in the county. And everybody says, "Yeah, I know." And you go, "Do ya?" Because I'm a Teton County resident, all of, 99.8% of all my property taxes goes to the county. I don't like the idea of a large jurisdictional political boundary being drawn between the town and the county. And I'm not saying it's horrible, but I'm saying I think the county has some small responsibility, fiscal responsibility, to its residents that live in the Town of Jackson, which is also in the county. You don't want to see this idea where the quality of life and the standard of living in one jurisdiction is radically different from the other. I don't think you, I do not support the idea that the town has to cut resources, can't plow snow, can't make sidewalks, and it's different in the county. Humidity in the community.
Our next question will be from Jasmine to Ms. Snapper.
Well, Natalie, when it comes to development in the county, how will you juggle factors like business interests, property rights, and residents' concerns?
Can we say it one more time?
Yeah, of course. When it comes to development in the county, how will you juggle factors like business interests, property rights, and residents' concerns?
Thank you. So to come back to our first question about, I think it was our first, or an early question about what our job is. The land development regulations are the most intense lawmaking part that commissioners have. And our first place that we go and get a decision about development anywhere is, what did LDR say? And if someone wants to do something, they get to go through that process. Those LDRs are the written and very copious legal manifestation of our community's vision and the comprehensive plan. And so as we seek to implement that year after year and update LDRs in each place, tension exists between an individual property owner or region, or someone that wants to do something, or a community need. Northern South Park, I think, is an example of that, of a place that we'd identified, this would be the right place, but it was not yet on the agenda to update those LDRs. But a property owner was eager to contribute and do that, and so we went through a community process to create the vision for that area, and then the last step of that process was writing the LDRs. Balance is not a particularly empowering word, it doesn't maybe galvanize people to stand up and shout, or stand up and be excited, but I think it is what we have to do in our community. It's only going to get harder as we sort of finish updating our LDRs and development continues, that we have to find the right balance between our shared values, between taking care of the people in our community and protecting our ecosystem. And so there are many different interests, it's our job to make sure that they are all heard and weighed as we follow the laws we set for ourselves in the LDRs.
Development. So I started with the comp plan, suggesting that development is most appropriate in a town. Town is heart is a constant term, but I oftentimes suggest the idea that what's happening at this point is, I call it "town's heart attack," because you can't, you can't say, you know, the Town of Jackson is three square miles, Teton County's over 40,000 square miles. So you can't say there's no growth anywhere here, and it all has to happen here. And I'm a straight-up townie, and I know there's a lot of counties in here, and I struggle with that, the idea that it all has to happen in the Town of Jackson. We currently have a moratorium that was hard-fought, took several years to get there, really proud of the town council, colleagues, that's a 5-0 vote, to pump the brakes big time. And now we have to say, "A moratorium for what? What do we seek to accomplish?" I've got a lot of years around here, and I got to tell you, is that there's no way to lock the gate, but I'm real tempted. I now think that, like, smart growth starts out with the definition of very little or no development, right? Like, secondly is to say, if we are going to develop, it needs to be priority-driven. For example, housing, you know, right across the street is the Virginian RV park, I'm interested, I'm very proud of the work we're doing. I'm very proud of the work we're doing. And I think the rubber's going to need to run on. We're going to potentially get over 230 de-restricted homes for $38 million. And you can run the numbers. That's an incredible, incredibly low subsidy for that volume of homes. Hopefully, 10% of them for seniors. But I'm for that type of development. But I am not for a 360,000-square-foot mega hotel owned by a multi-international corporation. Thanks for the question. We've wrestled with it as a community for a long time. We need to wrestle with it some more. Our growth right now is out of control. Anybody came to this meeting from Wilson, as I did, and might have seen a line of cars on Springville as far as the eye could see, or a line of cars from Y all the way back to Teton Pass, you know that our transportation infrastructure has not kept up with entitlements and the development that we've already allowed. So we need to put some caps on commercial growth, particularly big new hotels that create lots of demand from new visitors and people here and low-paying jobs. That's a problem. When you talk about balance, when we talk about balance, one can look at the U.S. Supreme Court takings law precedent, which I've certainly studied. And the Supreme Court in our nation and in our state allows local communities to do a balancing act and define, you know, where is the balance between private property rights and public interests? And there's substantial latitude on that spectrum. And the place that we find in Teton County will not be the same balance point that you find in Weston or Niagara or Lincoln or La Crona County. And that's okay. We have to find a balance that fits Jackson Hole. It's Teton County's future on Teton County's terms as well as we can without generating backlash from our state legislature to take away more of our independent authority. So it's a tricky space. It always has been, it always will be. But in Jackson Hole, we have, and in Teton County, you know, we have to protect our place in the ready-to-lose ecosystem or we've got nothing left.
Our next question will come from Dante to Mr. Rux.
Hey, Jim. I'm going to take us back to last month, to the Teton Pass class that struck many in the community very definitely. What did you learn about the Teton Pass crisis? And how would you apply that knowledge going forward as a county commissioner?
First and foremost, the importance of the relationship between the town of Jackson, Teton County, and the state of Wyoming, specifically YDOT. And these relationships I'm talking about is Eric Westby is a friend of mine. I have his cell phone number. I have the ability to call and talk with him. And I think that relationship was very much reaffirmed. I think it's stronger today than it was prior to the Teton Pass collapse. I think everybody felt really good about that. And if you were at the Alps Club yesterday afternoon, you sense that. But it speaks immediately, it speaks to housing. It speaks to climate change. It speaks to protecting our wildlife on our roadways. I mean, I think like the rest of us, it's like a singular pass closure brought forth a lot of real serious concerns. It put a magnifying glass on a lot of things that we already knew were challenging. But, and I have so many, my friends that live over there and I was a fishing guide for a couple decades over in Idaho. So I've come to reverse commute. And my heart went out to those folks who were suffering from that. But ultimately, picking one, transportation. And I have a top 10 list of micro solutions for parking that I haven't been able to get a lot of traction on over the last four years on the town council. And there are some solutions that can help with that. I have the same top 10 list of solutions for transportation. You can do a couple, I'll just throw a couple out. We need to extend the airport shuttle out to the west bank and help reduce some of the traffic we see on the north end. We need to radically approve and invest in our core infrastructure, transit, transportation, on-demand, so on and so forth. So lots of work to do with transportation. Thank you. We saw with the failure of the Teton Pass portion of the road on the Big Phil, that Jackson Hole people, Teton County people rise to the challenge and we take care of each other. We open our homes to our neighbors and workers. Businesses provide a gas stipend. We did that at Hunter Jackson. We learned also that the demand for travel into our community is not terribly flexible. It's not like people just said, "Well, I won't come to Jackson Hole anymore because the road has collapsed." All the people who work in Teton Valley still have to come here and do a job, make a living, and then get back home. So we learned just how interdependent we are, as if we didn't know it. And we sure as hell do. The interdependent we are with our neighbors in Teton Valley. Having, you know, good intergovernmental relations with Teton County, Idaho commissioners, and City of Victor, mayor and council is really important for us. So we learned that in the Teton Pass collapse. And I think we also learned that some of our support systems are really fragile. That we didn't see the, you know, the clay layer filling up water and know it was going to come. The inclinometers didn't get read in timely fashion. And suddenly there was a rip in the road and a motorcycle side track. And this thing, the Big Phil, revealed itself to be a bit of human hubris that we thought, and looking at John Ehringer here, a geologist, who appreciates that you can't just pile a bunch of rocks on and throw a road on top of it and think, "Okay, we've got a new roadway." So the engineering that goes into the replacement road is really important. It's a big deal. And we have to get it right. We have challenges in managing our transportation.
Dante, will you say the question again?
Of course I will. Let me find it real fast. Natalie, what did you learn about the Teton Pass crisis? And how would you apply that knowledge going forward as a county commissioner?
Thank you. The like fourth grader me that wants to answer the right question just came out in front of all of you. You know, what hit me after we got over some of the initial phases and in a couple of emergency operations conversations that I was in, is I had flashbacks to how our community had to respond during the pandemic, which was we built systems under a different type of stress at that time. But we built a lot of really great systems in our human service sector, in our collaboration with state agencies, in our communications and cross-communication. And it was, as horrifying as the pandemic era was, it was gratifying to see that we hadn't lost the power of the work and connections that we had made intergovernmentally with our NGOs and across the community, that we had things that we could flip a switch and turn them on. And I think that's what we did. And a lot of people were there ready to help. There was help offered that ended up not even being needed because of what was able to come to bear on it. And so for me, the part that newly stood out from it is a re-energized need to think about our regional community and make sure we continue to invest in that. We've done so with our regional, the start of our regional transportation planning, to have all of those voices at the table, not us deciding what's going to happen in those places, but us together deciding what we want in all of these places. We've done it when we started to study housing regionally to know that it's going to happen in multiple places and that we can't put that onto other people and make assumptions that this is our workforce just coming over and we need to get them back here. But to work together with people for what they want across the board. And I think we'll keep doing that and it's only going to be stronger.
Our next question will be from Jasmine to Mr. Carlman.
Yeah, so we've hit the 7:00 PM mark, which means we have 30 minutes left. Dante and I are journalists. We get paid to ask questions and we have about a million for you. But after this next question, we'll move to the questions from the public who attended today. So my last question for you before we move on to those is, what are three steps Teton County commissioners can take to solve the housing crisis?
I might play the red card now. Spend my time. I'm going to read from a letter that was written in 1977. Now, two subjects have especially bothered me. One, provision for low-cost housing. Rich people come and pay atrocious prices for land and build expensive homes. What provisions are going to be for the people to build, plan, and service these houses? This has been discussed a great deal. And I know at one of the meetings, someone said that the planned cluster developments, there's not a need, but only create a ghetto. I disagree here. It seems to me that living in a cluster housing here in this valley with access within a few moments to national forests, the national park lands, lake streams, forests, would not be a very unpleasant kind of life. My only question is whether, in the face of private enterprise taking advantage of the escalating land and building crisis, these developments will still be within reach of the average worker. Holy cow. So that was Marty Beer. Jim's reading her book. Marty was on the wall in 1977 when she wrote that. It remains a pressing concern. Affordable housing is a big deal. Supporting continued public funding for taking down the capital cost of affordable housing is a role the Teton County commissioners can play. Voters in 2022 approved $80 million in SPECT funding, some for the schools, some for the hospital, some for local government to deploy. Overseeing the use of that money and getting the best bang for the buck out of that is a constructive service from the Teton County commissioners. And then, do I get my red card?
Yes.
Working with our partners on federal lands particularly, and I'm thinking especially now of the Forest Service on taking advantage of their land holdings in East Jackson. And I know it's a town issue, but there may be opportunities in county land where it's appropriate. Location, 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 it really matters. Our public plans are not available for general housing development. But if the agencies need to house their workers, they've got appropriate locations for them. I think we need to work with them on that. It really flipped my switch when the Forest Service sold their backlog for the housing and then didn't leverage that sufficiently for their own workers' needs. You can't do that again. If we've got assets in the community for our central service providers, we need to make sure that we let those be used for affordable housing and not turn them into market projects.
Thank you. You're fine. That's me in the morning. A couple of things you said. We have to stay the table with the state to make sure we can keep local control so that the tools we are using to address housing locally don't get taken away from us. We need all the tools in the toolbox. I think we need to keep cracking the nut on preservation and how we can keep homes that are not currently de-restricted but have local folks and local workers living in them. We tried things. They have not seen a great uptake. And so I think we have to keep exploring in the preservation space what we can do to keep our neighborhoods affordable for the folks that live and work here. And then my kind of wild idea, I don't know if it's wild or not because other people do it, but I don't know legally where it fits in Wyoming's framework yet. So we'll likely take work with the state legislature is to try to find a way for some of our rental properties or folks that own larger rental apartment complexes. Is there a way that we could abate a portion of their taxes and they would charge affordable rents for a portion of their existing, already existing units? And find a way to lower rental costs for apartments that are already built that we don't need and can keep them in the pool that we want. And then the last thing I would say, every time we talk about affordable housing, we have to talk about space for affordable childcare and ways that we can keep making our community affordable across the spectrum for working families, not just within their housing.
Thank you. Great questions tonight. I just ran these numbers the other day since I've been on council because I like to let people know my voting record is, we built 338 de-restricted homes in about the last three and a half years. Anybody says it'll never be enough. And the analyst says, "We're not doing anything with housing." I take exception to that. We always need to do more. But there's a lot of great news about what's happening with housing lately. There's a hundred more that will hit by the end of my time on town council. First and foremost, right, like Northern South Park, to actualize and realize the vision of what that development can be. Namely, it should be over 750 de-restricted homes. Currently, it's 70% of the units in there should be de-restricted. And it wouldn't be the first time that Jackson approved something and got started on it and it never happened. And I think Marty spoke to that a little bit. The Virginia RV park right next to it, right? So this is not conceptual. We need to get to work on this. Public, private partnerships. Bill Collins is back there. We just got, we now have 21 new voluntarily de-restricted homes with the President Chair and Church. Philanthropy, housing for seniors. Work with federal tax credits and federal grants. Working with state funding to get increased funding on it. And I'll give you one example. All of the above, everything is, should be considered. But only allowing accessory units if they're de-restricted is an idea that I'd be in support of at that point.
Our next question was read by Dante to Ms. Snack.
Great. Here's a question from the community. Our community does a great job with setting sustainability and climate goals. It does less well with accountability for meeting those goals. What is your top climate sustainability goal? And what steps will you take to ensure the BCC is accountable for community goals?
Really great question. This has been a thorn in, I would say, the BCC's kind of side as we did some internal work. I supported and continue to support our practice of taking, we should lead by example at the county with our own work. And we created a plan and we put it on the shelf. And we have, over the last few years, tried to do better about taking it off the shelf. And we have hired a person to help us do that now and to institutionalize some of that work. The place that I continue to see, it's just, it's interesting how it fits together, but I'm pretty focused on our work around water and what our climate action around water, the connections that we're dealing with based on our water quality issues and wastewater and dealing with clean water for people and how that is all tied together. The action that we have on that is ahead of us. And I don't know that we always think about that in our sustainability pot. But I think it's been important, all the investments that we are going to be making as a community will be tied to that. The other place that we can work towards more accountability, I think, within our staff and within the community demanding differently. Right now, we have to do what we can afford. And usually the things that we want to do, whether that's how we did a housing project or what we pursue, isn't today the most cost-effective. And so the community being part of the dialogue, we want different standards and we're willing to pay for them, has to be part of the equation. And in terms of accountability, the public is our accountability measure. But I do think we are at the cusp of doing better now that we've institutionalized some of that versus what I'm playing.
Thank you. I think the town of Jackson actually has been the leader on sustainability, environmental, climate action, so on and so forth. I'm actually fairly critical of inaction on behalf of the Teton County on some of these issues. The town of Jackson hired a sustainability administrator, one of the first examples of such a position in the country. On that, I thought that could have, should have been a shared position, but it ended up just being Jackson. Glad we moved forward. We just approved our sustainability plan. Last week's town council needed an exceptional document, concrete, practical document. I share Natalie's top priority with progressive water quality. And I don't know why we don't have septic reform already. We have been in this meeting two different times for the Water Quality Master Plan, which is an exceptional plan. But we need to actualize that plan. In the meantime, you don't have to wait for a plan to do what you know to be right, which is septic reform, right? And it's not a real popular term. But we know the leading cause of water quality degradation in our valley is human waste in the form of septic fields, right? The town of Jackson, I'm really proud of us. Every single time somebody asks us in the county to hook up to the town wastewater treatment plant, we say yes. This is the right thing to do for water. But that needs, we have capacity issues there, not tomorrow, but down the line. And the town and county, you talk about the next great field that needs to happen between the town and the county, is to modernize and expand the wastewater treatment facilities south of the town such that we can bring more of the pollutants in the county into the appropriate space where it can be effectively treated before it goes into the state river. Thank you. Looked at Marty Lynch for advice on this. She's asked the county to adopt international building standards that respect climate change. And I appreciate her work on this. I would love to find a way to charge a higher fee for private planes that come into our airport. They consume an enormous amount of fossil fuels for a very small number of people to move around. And they create a hell of a nuisance for us.
to move around and they create a hell of a nuisance for us. So if we can have a fee for landings or takeoffs out of our airport, that some of that goes as a climate mitigation, let's do that. If we have to work with our US Congress to make that lawful, let's make that effort. An idea that's been floated and has failed a couple of times in the past, but should not be given up, is harnessing falling water at Jackson Lake Dam. I was in this room last night with the National Park Service leadership on a different question. They're going to oppose it. They can never allow that to happen. And we'll have environmental groups who say that is the end of, you know, national parks as we know them. That's not the case, but it would take specific federal legislation to authorize harnessing the falling water at Jackson Lake Dam. There's enough energy there to power all the energy needs of grant Teton National Parks use year-round. That's pretty important and electrons are fungible. So if we have that hydroelectric working there, that means that some other kind of source somewhere else, a coal source, can be taken offline. Doesn't mean we just add to the energy supply. It's a difficult thing to embrace and accept because we love our national park, but I think it can be no change, no impact, and a benefit to everybody.
Our next audience question will be read by Dante to Mr. Carl.
Great. This is also from the community. You have all been extremely complimentary of each other. It's nice to see. What differentiates you from your fellow commissioners?
Yeah, thank you. I alluded to it in my opening remarks and I'll, I guess, emphasize a little bit, I'm not a current member of the town council or the county commission, and I think that there's value in having a fresh face. If both Natalia and Jim are elected and occupy the two available seats on the board of county commissioners, you'll be adding people who are already a part of the system and who've got, you know, their institutional momentum with them for sure, which is a good thing. But I bring a fresh perspective and I think that's valuable. Something else that I have that I'm really proud of and worked very hard to achieve is a law degree and not just a degree, but 28 years in private practice, in working with clients, in untangling regulations, in making cases, reading carefully, and as I said, in listening with the ears of a careful thinker and a careful critic. If applicants or their lobbyists or lawyers come before the county commission and make arguments that are, as often is the case, three-quarters good and one-quarter not so good, I hope I hear the quarter that's not so good and call them out on it. So bringing that level of critical thinking, not letting the wool get pulled over my eyes or anybody's eyes through my skills as a lawyer is something that I'm grateful to break the service and I hope that you'll ask me to use.
Thank you so much. We, the beauty of having a board makes that we get to have a variety of people serving on a board to make sure that we're representing a broad spectrum of perspectives when we make our decisions, make our policies, and I think that's when we get the best policies that we can. I'm a working mom, I'm in a working family. Life is stressful. It's stressful for a lot of people in our community. There's so much awesomeness about Teton County, but it's really hard. It's hard for people to be here. It's hard for people to make it. I have a lot of opportunity and privilege in my own life, but I also know how hard it is. I choose to be here and work really hard to be here in our household, which means my husband and I have three, sometimes four jobs to make it, in paramourage, in favor childcare, to get across town, to do the big driving act that is having a family and working and trying to enjoy this beautiful place. And many of those people and many of my peers don't have time to weigh in with all the comment on issues that we're facing. They don't have time to come to a meeting. They're trying to figure out how to get everyone fed and get everyone where they need to go and support the PTA at school and do the project and all the things. And so I have taken it as a great honor to try to represent that perspective and bring the thoughts and lived experiences of working families and also of women. Our state is not equal for women and we have work to do and we need women in the rooms to do it.
Thank you. I agree with the poser of the question. It's great to work with people who are so excellent and it's very civil. Great question. I think I'm uniquely qualified. I've been using that term a lot. I don't know how to say it and like I say, I'm uncomfortable and it doesn't sound humble, but I think I was born to do this job, you know? It's, I have such deep connections with every segment of this community, Hispanic, Latino, young, old, brand-new-to-town, old-school, south-of-town, Kelly, Alta, Moran. But beyond that is, I'm a very concrete, practical, common-sense person. I have to reference Jeff Parry again because he worked with my dad who was a football coach and he'd say things like, "Hopes a boat that don't float." Like you had to get the job done. And I've listened to all of the philosophy and the ideology and the intellectual analysis in this community, which is we're really good at that. As far as actually making things happen, I think it's a weakness of ours. I think we go analysis paralysis. And I'm a person who likes to fixate on the common good and actually make it happen. I'm also unique to the extent that I'm the only person who's worked for the town of Jackson. And that relationship between the town and the county is not that strong. And we use language for it, but I call it, the people who like the idea of family, they just don't like their family. It's like a dysfunctional Thanksgiving dinner, right? We say all our neighbors across the parking lot, you go, yeah, the ones you haven't talked to in a long time. And also the relationship at the state level, I think, makes me unique. Thank you.
So sorry, I went a little out of order on the last question. This one will be started by Mr. Rooks and given by...
Great. Well, we have two questions addressing this issue in our great community aisle, so thank you so much for contributing questions, guys. Both of these address the fairgrounds and the rodeo. One version of the question is, what is your position on using the rodeo grounds for affordable housing? And the other is, will you sign a long-term lease for the fairgrounds of the rodeo? So I think you get an idea of what people are thinking on that issue and I'd love for you to ask it or, yeah, ask it, answer it. Thank you.
This is a perfect question for me. So first and foremost, I do not support developing the fairgrounds. I think that 12 and a half acres on the north side of Stone King Avenue are exactly as they should be now in perpetuity. There's this other thing about where do we store our snow and the rich western heritage. But we all know about this, I call it the safe the whatever group, because I'm not so sure they were focused on saving the fairgrounds. Art and I were down in Shining two years ago finding a bill that was going to use eminent domain for the State Parks Division to seize all 26 acres of that property. And we defeated that, I'm very proud of that. And then I came back and introduced the motion during Madam's primary council, not part of the agenda, to create a long-term permanent lease on the fairground between the town and the county, the fair and the rodeo. That's currently out there. I'm working with the fair as we speak via Tribe Unlimited, and it's funny that we've put that lease proposal to the county, and that was about four or five months ago, and we have yet to hear back any response whatsoever from the county about what we should do with regards to that. The fair board is completely unaware of what's going on with this fair lease. And I was confronted with that just yesterday talking with the fair board and I said, so what do you think of the lease? And it turned out to be a 50-year lease extension that can be revisited every 10 years and would permanently create a lease to protect the fair and the rodeo grounds. And they hadn't heard of it. And so this is an example of like somebody needs to make the phone call and have the relationship to actualize something that I think would be very, very positive.
Wyoming State Constitution requires us to have a county fair. Teton County will have a county fair. Teton County will have fairgrounds to host our county fair. The current location is great for those of us who visit it and who use it. It's what we've kind of grown up with and it's our heritage, we're used to it. And as I think Jim very importantly pointed out, it's a really great place to store snow. I see some snow storage, snow moving people in the audience here and thanking them for their great work. There's a tenor in the fairgrounds debate that says, "Keep it here or die," right? This is the only place that you can possibly have fairgrounds in Teton County. That's just not true. We don't have a good alternative right now, so that's the right place for it. And if that means we sign a lease for 10 years or 20 years, fine, let's do that. But if there's a chance to have a location at the corner of High School Road and South Highway 89, for example, near the school system with better access for parking, that could be a fine alternate site with really good benefits to the community, to the economy, to everybody. So the current fairgrounds is the home, it's going to be there. I'm happy that it's there, but I also think we have to be open to alternate locations.
Thank you. The fair is coming up, so if you haven't got your tickets, I'm sorry because I take a lot of damage. I love having the fair in town. I think it makes it easy for everyone to access, but I share Mr. Carl's opinion and we have heard from members of our fair board that we could have even more world-class agricultural opportunities with more space. But that is the where, the how do we pay for it and how do we get it is the million or billion-dollar question, depending on which land you want to look at. So will we continue to have a fair? Yes, we will. We will have fairgrounds. We will have a beautiful, beautiful community building if it's not been in the new community fair building. It's awesome. And having been to a few different types of gatherings there, it is a community that will build a community. And it's a resource we should all really be proud of and you should go check it out. You should have an event there, there's a huge kitchen. And if there is still relying to the negative rhetoric that was built around the fair is that we've all been able to embrace that building, what it means that the fair is the place where everybody gets to go and you can be around all different types of people and see people you haven't seen and there's something for everyone and that is something we should celebrate in our community.
One more question. Okay, we have time for one more question, which will be read by Dante to Ms. McCall.
Sweet Natalia, what is your position on the CWPP, the Community Wildfire Preparatist Plan? And how important is it for homeowners' insurance?
The Community Wildfire Protection Plan? So it's important. I think our whole community and the conversation is getting started about the wildland urban interface and that our whole county and our town are at risk for wildfire. We've learned from what happened in other areas that had kind of an urban center that we would have thought would have been protected and have seen horrible tragedies in other parts of our country. And so I think we need to take steps to protect our community and the first step of that is education and being prepared and working together between the town and the county. And counties have spent generally more time on this because we deal with a wildland urban interface within our LDRs and deal with it on individual, personal levels and/or neighborhood levels. I think, I don't want to put words in the tongue, but I would be curious. I think it's a newer conversation for the town and so something for us to work on together because it would be naive of us to think that we aren't potentially vulnerable for there to be a major event, given our geography and the way our town and county is set up.
Thank you. I know many people in here remember the Little Horseley Fire. The fact is, we got lucky. If I knew a bunch of my friends who are volunteer and fire staff and when that fire was coming in cresting kind of the cash game area, that wind shifted and that just saved us, right? And we have a short memory for disasters as humans, if you haven't noticed. And then I watched, right after I got hurt several years ago, we watched the fire start in East Ramon View where a Mylar balloon hits a power line and almost roasts our town. Like we are so vulnerable. We have to embrace fully, and I think you're right, that the town has kind of been saying, oh, we're surrounded by the counties, but we're kind of okay. We're not okay. We need to, and we have work going on right now. And this line is very positive. I think the town needs to incorporate the wildlife fire urban interface. The insurance question's a really interesting one, right? So early on, I was contacted by some folks who said, well, if all of a sudden my house, if I'm in the wildland, if I have a non-conforming house, you know, wood shingles, bad idea, just bad idea. But there's a lot of things, like if I have a tree next to my house, I'm non-conforming. And the line was, hey, you're okay, all non-conforming lots and properties in town won't be held to standard. Then the gentleman called me and says, yes, but then I can't get insurance because I'm non-conforming in this wildlife, wildfire urban interface. And then the next one hits, which is, if this town doesn't embrace this next step, it may become very possible that none of the properties in this town can get fire insurance. And that's happening all over the West as we speak.
Yeah, the private sector, the insurance industry is going to have a lot to say about the cost of insurance at the wildland and urban interface. And they bloody well know where the trees are and where the forests are. I have now a happy memory of sitting on our back porch not long after Ann and I had moved to Wilson with my brother-in-law Ted Ladd, who has been on the lower-valley board for the last 18 years. I think he might be up again. Please vote for Ted Ladd. He did a good job on that board. He was, they were remodeling their house at the high end of Indian Paybrush next to National Forestland. And he'd crack a beer and we watched some different colored smoke spiral go up and he's looking through the blind and I said, that's definitely my house. And he cracked another beer. Well, his house didn't burn down. We had amazing response from the US Forest Service and all the local teams coordinating it. Subsequently, we've had the Teton to Snake Fuels Reduction Program, try and reduce the fuel loading between the developed area and the national forests. You know, that takes out some habitat when you do that, but it also provides a buffer so that there's a chance to beat back fire if one gets started. That's kind of a compromise that we have to advance. So I would expect really the big dog in this game will be the private insurance, private sector insurance providers who will say, you want to live next to that potential conflagration? That's a high-risk area. We're going to charge you a lot or we won't even insure you. So, and I'm very proud of my brother-in-law and my mother-in-law for the fuels reduction work they've done on their properties so that, you know, the chance of them having something go wrong and trigger a bigger problem for themselves, their neighbors, is reduced.
Thank you. Each candidate will now be given one minute to give their closing remarks, starting with Mr. Carl.
Thank you very much to News and Guide, KJOL, and the Teton County Library. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you, to be here in the Orway Auditorium. We're grateful and lucky to have such a beautiful facility. And I'm proud that my sister-in-law was on the board of the Teton County Library when this facility was designated and built and that my wife, Ed Ladd, served two terms on the county library board and on the foundation board. This is a great venue and so thank you all for coming and making this place where we can gather and consider your choices on the August 20th primary ballot. I have three main campaign priorities. I've got a website, carlmanforcommissioner.com. Please log on. My main priorities are conservation, affordable housing, and transportation. Those questions have been nicely elevated tonight. I hope that my answers have been satisfactory to you and that you get hearing. This forum and watching our behavior, you look at the three of us and you say, I'm voting for Ladd.
Thank you. I'm going to use my red card in case I go over, but it won't be much over. Thank you. I'm really grateful for this question that we had tonight with all of you and getting to connect with you is the best part about campaigning, is serving for folks and that you care enough to come out. Our nation is continuing to move through a really challenging period and I'll be transparent to say that my usual steadfast optimism and hope for the future has altered recently. And I went looking to fill my cup over a really tough weekend and I ended up listening to one of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s sermons about loving your enemies. And that led me to one of his well-known statements that appears on his monument in Washington DC, so I'm going to share that with you. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. And he goes on to talk in his sermon about the most, that hating someone is not dangerous for the person who's hated, but is really dangerous for the person doing the hating because of how it eats you up inside. So I just want to say this is a moment in our nation that really needs all of us to act and we have to have a shared responsibility for our future and seek justice in the places that we need it. Sorry, I'm not going to cry at every forum. So I hope each of you start by voting and I'm sure this crowd is going to vote, but encourage your friends to vote and your neighbors and the new person that moved here. We all need to vote and we know now tonight that our local races are the ones that affect your life. We heard all about the stuff that's going to affect your life every day. I am a pragmatic problem solver and I'm focused on building a prosperous future for our community and I'm caring for my family, for your family, and for this beautiful place. So I would ask for you to vote for Natalia Dean-Ecker on August 20th.
Thank you. Powerful comments. I just always say, thank you a thousand times over. It's a true honor to serve this community. I don't think of it as a burden whatsoever. It's truly something that like I'm proud of and I'm glad I'm honored. Some details, the primary election, this is the most important primary election, in my opinion, taking place in Teton County this year. It is on August 20th. Early voting starts on July 24th. And it's important to know, if you want to vote for any of us, you have to be a registered Democrat. If you're not a registered Democrat, you can't cross party vote. You may have been purged such a, what do you know, chucked... You may have been purged, such a, what do you know, chup gray, purged, right? If you didn't vote last time or you moved or there's address things, so you might check in at the county with the clerk to ensure that you're ready to vote if you can vote. My top four priorities are very similar. I think we all share a lot of priorities. Land, water, air, wildlife, top priority always. Core infrastructure, transportation, housing, truly affordable community housing, but also relationships, relationships between the town and the county, relationships between the county and the state of Wyoming. If I'm going to vote Jim Brooks, my daughter is running my Instagram page because I didn't know about Instagram. And if I talk about her more than I'll cry as well. So thank you for being here. Nice stuff.